Welcome to the Isleta Independent School District Special Board and Canvas of Election Meeting of the Board of Trustees. The meeting of the Board of Trustees is a meeting of the board that the public is allowed to attend. As provided by Isleta ISD Policy, BED, we invite members of the public to make comments during the citizens input portion at the start of the meeting according to the instructions provided with the electronic posting notice of our meeting. Legally, the board may listen but may not enter into a discussion on the matters in the citizens input. We remind everyone that this is a board meeting often attended by students and ask that we conduct ourselves in a manner that best represents the values and traditions of the Isleta Independent School District. This meeting of the Board of Trustees is called to order at 6:02 PM. We have a quorum with Shane Hagerty, Charlie Bustillos, Connie Woodruff, Catherine, sorry, and myself, Cruz Ochoa. Trustee Soltero Ramirez and Mike Rosales are considered excused. Secretary Lucero, will you please lead us in the pledges and a moment of silence?
Haley.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the good and justice for all. Honored Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one nation under God, one and indivisible.
Now for a moment of silence. Thank you. May be seated.
Thank you, Trustee Luceros. We will proceed to our first action item, and that is Canvas Official Election Returns of May 6, 2023, General Election. Each of you has a copy of the final election results provided by the El Paso County Elections Administrator. These results are in District 2. Election was canceled due to unopposed candidate elected Connie Woodruff. In District 4, Mike Dwyer received 1,646 votes or 56.12%. Mike Rosales received 1,287 votes or 43.88%, elected as Mike Dwyer. In District 6, Soltero G. Ramirez III received 244 votes or 19.57%. Debbie Torres received 515 votes or 41.30%, and Chris Hernandez received 488 votes or 39.13%. Declared a runoff between candidates Debbie Torres and Chris Hernandez set for June 10, 2023. Is there any discussion? If no further discussion, I have an electronic motion on the action item number one.
Mr. President, I move to complete the canvassing, approve, and certify the results from May 6, 2023, elections as provided by the El Paso County Elections Administrator as read out loud and authorized the board president or superintendent to execute such other documents as necessary.
We have a second by Ms. Lucero. Please cast your electronic votes. Results are in, five in favor, non-opposed. Okay, at this time, I invite Judge Brian Hagerty, Justice of the Peace, Precinct 2, to come to the podium to swear in our newly elected trustees. After the swearing-in, we will take a short break to take pictures. Swear in elected board members of District 2, Belair, and number four, Eastwood.
Do you want to do it here first? Lady? Lady go first?
Yes, Connie, I do. I'll be first. That would be this one, sir.
You want to do it, Mike?
Yes, you'll do it here. So that you can help us behind him.
You want me to turn this way?
Yes.
Okay. In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, I state your name.
Connie Woodruff.
Do solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Isleta Independent School District Board of Trustees, District 2.
Of Isleta Independent School District Board of Trustees, District 2.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
name and by the authority of the State of Texas, this is to certify that a general election held on May 16, 2023, Connie Woodruff was duly elected to serve a four-year term in the office of trustee for the Isleta Independent School District 2. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, you ready? Raise your hand. In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, I state your name.
Mike Dwyer.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully.
I will faithfully.
Execute the duties of the office.
Execute the duties of the office.
Of Isleta Independent School District Board of Trustees, District 4.
Isleta Independent School District Board of Trustees, District 4.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
Defend the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Got to get one with Connie, I like that. Take my hand. Look at the camera. There you go.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right here?
Okay.
What do you want?
I have, we have the State of Texas Certification of Election certificate in the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, this is to certify that a general election held on May 16, 2023, Mike Dwyer was duly elected to serve a four-year term in the office of trustee for Isleta ISD District 4. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So at this time, we'll take a short break, and you want to come down here and take some pictures?
I think they want to take pictures with their families.
You want?
Take pictures with them with your family.
Wherever you go.
Okay, Mike, I'm going to join us.
We're going to do a little.
Everybody's a ship going before this one.
Can I have everybody's ship going before this one?
Yes.
Everybody ready?
Here we go, ten, three.
At this time, we invite the family to come up here and take pictures.
Congratulations here.
Come up there.
Just come up there.
Oh, tomorrow is my opponent.
I'm just trying to see if I can find that.
Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Good job. Good job.[587.27]